... that's ravaged our community and devastated so many lives and so many homes. We pray for them, Heavenly Father, and then you will strengthen them in whatever measure that suits your approval, Heavenly Father. We just pray that you be with them and give them the strength that they need to get through these trying times. And we pray that you'll just be with us in this meeting tonight, in Christ's name. Amen.
(inaudible) The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen it? Colorado, please, ma'am.
Rhonda Allen. Richie Boland. Veronica Buchanan. Gary Farley. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Jeff Phillips. Steve Sandlin. Mike Vaught. Vincent Windrow. Craig Lynch. We have a quorum.
All right, we do have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion on the remainder of minutes.
Chairman, I would like to have a review.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All opposed, motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. David?
Monthly building code department reports on the table, Mr. Chairman.
All right, can we look over those? If they have any questions, we'll address those later. Anything withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir.
Submitted for site plan review, hooligan upholstery. Elizabeth?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you recall, at the last planning commission meeting, our day meeting, we considered a site plan for the hooligan upholstery out on Franklin Road, Highway 96. At that time, we asked for a deferral of the plan in order for them to make some changes to the landscape plan that needed to be made. The engineer, we had a meeting with him, he has made the adjustments that we have asked for. Just to bring it to your attention, the building, as you see it on the site plan, they actually shifted the building to, a little more to the west of the site compared to where it was originally. However, they were able to look at our new landscape regulations and make the appropriate changes. I will say that there are a couple of minor items on the landscape plan that still need to be addressed, but these are items that we should be able to handle pretty easily administratively. One of them, whether the requirements, has to do with the location of a spigot or a water source for the, within 300 feet of all the plantings that just wasn't shown on the plan. The other was there was a spacing of just a couple of the trees on both sides of the property that needed to be amended just to meet our requirement, but that should be able to be done pretty easily. So with that, it appears to be in good order, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Questions? Do you have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved, do I have a second?
Second.
All opposed, motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Reclassification request, all American contract and conditional use permit. Elizabeth?
Thank you. Our first application this evening is for 9536 Shavville Highway. The site is approximately three acres in size, and it's currently zoned transportation. It does have a conditional use permit on it for many warehouses, and the request for this evening is for industrial equipment storage. The applicant wants, wishes to build a small prefabricated metal building on the site. This building and the existing gravel area will be used for storing equipment such as forklifts, backhoes, trailers, delivery trucks. There'll be no office, no bathroom, no employees on site. There'll also be no walk-in customers as well. At the April 14, 2010 BZA meeting, the site was given a variance for the parking area to remain gravel as long as it, as long as the activity was limited to private commercial storage, as it's being requested this evening. They also granted a variance to the fire hydrant within 1,000 feet development requirement due to the water line being undersized on that side of the road. Now, as I said, the property was rezoned to transportation in 1999. There was actually a site plan approved for many warehouses, but none were ever constructed. The main distinction between what is approved for the site and what the applicant would like to do now is the fact that there will be outside storage of equipment, and our zoning resolution actually prohibits outside storage without express permission within a conditional use permit. So the surrounding area contains property zone, retail, wholesale, trade, industrial, services, and R-15. This property was part of the Christiana Buchanan land use study, which shows the future land use of this property as neighborhood mixed use. So just give you a quick look at the property. You'll see there's quite a bit of vegetation on the site already, and here's Shavville. Now, this is just looking at the existing driveway that's going into the site, and then I kind of want to show you the area that the applicant is proposing storing the equipment. You can see there's a bit of gravel on it already, and it does have an existing, you know, tree line that will help screen it. The applicant is present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions before we open it up to a public hearing? Okay, we'll open this up for a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak for or against? If the applicant would come forward, please. It's applicant. Do you have any comments you want to make, or just answer some questions?
I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Face it, Mike, so.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. If you look at the drawing, and the property, as it touches 231, that's the east side of the property or the entrance. You can see the existing gravel driveway that we propose to use. If you will come further into the property where it turns right or north toward Murfreesboro, if you will, and jogs back to the north, that's where we're talking about parking forklift and industrial equipment. That side of the property and the rear of the property, all the way down the side, the north side and the back, the west side, are screened with trees and existing vegetation and bushes. So where Mike is proposing to park his industrial equipment would not be seen from Highway 231.
Does the, down the south side, what's the buffering there? What are you talking about?
Down the south side, there's really nothing.
Yeah.
It's just an open field.
Yeah. Are you proposing buffering down that?
Well, I'm sure Mr. Reeves would do whatever, you know, you folks feel like he needs to do. The building is going to be built on the south side of the property.
So the building would probably be, some, the equipment would be on the north side of the building.
That's correct.
Yeah. I own the farm right across the road from you right there, so I, I don't have a problem with it, but I didn't, is anybody, has there been any calls?
No, not on this application.
Okay. Karen?
How much equipment are you talking about, having out there?
I don't really know, ma'am.
Okay.
You mean how many pieces?
Yes.
I don't have any idea.
Okay.
Gary?
Well, that brings another question for me. Are we going to need to know how much equipment's going to be parked there in this, to put in the recommendation? Doug?
I'm sorry.
Are we not going to need to know how much equipment?
I, in the staff report, I chose not to limit the pieces of equipment, instead to put in a requirement that none be visible from Shavville Pike. That way, the applicant would have a little bit more leeway to bring in and bring out equipment as needed, and the surrounding community would still not be impacted. And as for the screening on the south side, this applicant, the applicant will have to do a site plan, and the building will act as a buffer for some, and if there's any more landscape needed, we'll, we'll make sure that gets addressed at the site plan phase.
Yeah, the flag lot like that, you are in behind the flag, to where all the equipment's going to be down that north side, and it is.
That's correct.
Okay.
The property right there to the north, right there on the corner of Midland-Fosterville and 231, that's been rezoned in the past, wouldn't it rezone for a drive-in theater or something?
Drive-in theater, yes.
It's been a long time ago.
It has. It was a drive-in theater, and I'm not sure about a convenience market.
And a gas station as well.
Gas station, too.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. Does it, yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like just you to tell me your story. What are you going to be doing with that equipment? Why is it there? How long will it be there? Is it for sale, or are you working on it, or what? The name of this company is called Industrial Forklifts. The home office is in Lynchburg, Tennessee. Mr. Reeves sells and services industrial lift equipment to local industry. So when he has a customer that needs a repair or breakdown, rather than haul the equipment all the way from the other side of Moore County, really closer to the state line, to bring it all the way from Moore County to Murfreesboro is, you know, that's, that's a long time to do that. If he has industrial equipment sitting right here in Murfreesboro, he can respond to his customer within 30 minutes. So for him, it's a service and a commitment to his local industry that he has here in Rutherford County.
Any potential for any permanently junk equipment to be stored there?
No, sir. This is not junk equipment. This is equipment that he would sell and/or lease to local industry. This is not a junkyard, if that's what you're asking. Okay. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
I noticed in the comments, there's no bathroom, no office, nothing there.
There will be no employees on site, only when someone comes in to either pick up or drop off a piece of equipment.
Okay. What about the trees that are on the, I guess that, the, the trees there, are you going to take all them out and park equipment there, too?
No, sir. You see where the property jogs back to the right or north toward Murfreesboro? You can see the existing gravel parking lot. Now, what we'll do is just poison that, take the grass back out that's, that's sorty there. We won't be doing any more construction to the gravel parking lot rather than just poisoning the grass.
And you're not going to expand into that tree line?
No.
On the western side of it, he's talking about there, you're not going, you're just going to stay in that gravel parking lot?
That's correct. It's existing.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I may be a little confused. Did you say that it was for sales and service of lifting equipment?
For sale and leasing.
And leasing, okay.
Yes.
So there's no repair?
No, sir. His permanent yard is in Moore County, Tennessee.
Okay. Thank you.
Will?
So how much buffer is proposed on this north side? Because if it says no equipment is to be seen from 231, well, coming up 231 from Shavville, you can see the whole side of the property now, so are they going to have to put a full-blown buffer down that entire side where the building doesn't block?
Yeah.
And how do we interpret no equipment being visible from 231? Is that in the summertime when the leaves are out, or is that in the wintertime when the leaves are off? And, because you can see most of that property, I would think of now, unless there's a big elevation change, I can't see from here. So are they going to have to buffer that whole side?
They will. They'll have to meet our new landscape requirements, and one of the good way to make sure it was buffered permanently would be to have a fence. A six-foot fence can actually reduce the amount of landscaping required, but would assure that it was properly screened from the road.
When he comes back for that?
He'll have to submit a site plan that will come back before you, for review.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, did this application come before the BZA, or was there another si, something like it?
Yeah, it came before the BZA for the fire hydrant requirement and for the parking material, the gravel parking. The reason it's coming back here is because the activity that was relayed at that meeting was a lot different than what we were, under the impression it was going to be. When we found that out, we're like, well, wait a minute, you know, that's really needs to come back to the, this body for amendment. The BZA really didn't have the authority to do that at that.
I got a bored life. I watched the BZA, that's how, this thing kept ringing the bell, I thought, I thought it did.
Okay. Anyone else? Will?
Richie and I were just wondering, if you're not going to do any service work and all, what do you need the building for? Just to make, just so you can secure the ones inside?
Yes, sir, and store parts.
Well, if you're storing parts, but we're not going to be doing any mechanic work there?
He does a lot of mechanic work here locally, sir, in the industrial, in the plants that he services, and so he would house equipment that he would need to do work here in Rutherford County.
I just, if we're not going to have a bathroom facility there, I just wonder, you know, this thing evolved, and in two years now, there's a couple of mechanics there working inside the building, you know, and I just don't know how we police that, and if.
Well, I, I guess that what I would say there is that, I mean, the building's going to have to be built to building code regardless of the activity going on there, and that's something we'll rely on Mr. Jones and his staff to help us with.
Okay. Yeah, Steve?
One question right there on, are you going to request a cut-through on 231? Or are you just, these folks going, I guess, south, will have to go down to the Midland-Fosterville cut-through and do a U-turn, or come down here where it says, Shavville, that's the only other cut-through right there?
Well, there, there is a cut-through on the north side of the property, before you get down to the Fosterville Road, I believe.
There is.
I don't think it's showing it on there.
It's, it is, right there, what's this, Shelbyville?
Yeah, I see, I see that one, and then I see the one up there.
The other one's in Midland Road.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
He's halfway between them, right there.
That's what I was talking about. Are you requesting a cut-through in the middle, or you just, the folks are going to do the...
There's already one there, sir.
Not in front of the property?
Just, no, just past the property.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm pointing out. Yeah, I see the one on both sides, north and south.
Okay.
If you're going south, you're going to have to do, actually, you can't take this one up here, because you'll be going the wrong side of the road. So you're going to have to go down there and turn at Midland-Fosterville and come back up the road.
Yeah, yeah. That's why you'll have to do it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think the state would give him one.
No.
I don't think they would.
To kind of feed off that question, what size trucks are you going to be hauling this equipment to have to do that kind of U-turn?
The largest trailer that Mike has that I'm aware of is about 24 feet long.
That's going to be a problem out there at Midland-Fosterville, causing, as far as traffic. If you're coming from Lynchburg, coming from Shavville, you're going to come in and turn left right there on Midland-Fosterville, make a U-turn and come back up to get into the property with a 24-foot trailer and, what, about a one-ton, ton and a half, or two-ton truck?
I've been in and out of that lot many times for Mike with a 24-foot trailer, and that's what I've done with no problem.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone else wish to speak for or against? See no one? We'll close the public hearing. Okay, back to the planning commission, what's your wishes?
I'm just wondering if it's possible, or should we restrict disabled equipment that's on there for a number of days, something like that? If he hauls in something that's broke and doesn't work, and it sits there for a long period of time, to me, it becomes, in essence, junk or a junkyard. And I'm just wondering if, I might be alone in this, and if so, we'll just go on, but if we should limit it, if limit the number of days that something could be on there when it wasn't operational?
Mr. Phillips, I could try to answer that. From what I heard the applicant stating was that there was going to be no storage of that kind to begin with. So right now, if it were approved, I think it'd be approved with the understanding that there's not going to be any of that storage there, so there wouldn't be necessarily a need for a timeframe. That, at least, that's my understanding of what he was, what he was saying. He said it was really just for equipment to be leased or purchased, and the parts and everything that he needs are actually taken to wherever it is that he's going to be working, and that material is taken care of there on the property.
In the language, could it be storage for usable equipment, or workable, or whatever have you want to word that?
I mean, you could add a condition that prohibits the storage of equipment that is not functioning. That could be a condition that was added to it, not necessarily give it a timeframe, just say that it's not allowed on the site.
I think that was, that would work, wouldn't it, Jeff? Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm still a little concerned about the earlier question about how many pieces of equipment are going to be on the lot. I mean, I don't know if we're talking about five or 100, you know, and I would like to see a number, and I don't think I'm the person to pick that number, but, and other stuff up and down Shavville, we've been specific on numbers. It's a little farther out, it's a good site, just back off the road, flag-shaped lot, but I still like a number, as far as, so we know what size scale we're dealing with.
What was the number we limited the car, the, up on the...
That was, I want to say somewhere between 300 and 500 cars. That was a much bigger site, though.
Yeah, yeah.
That was right on the right-of-way, and that was farther, closer into town, but personally, I just like to have some number, and I'm very flexible what that number is, but I'd like to have some sort of guideline as far as how many pieces of equipment we're talking there.
Okay.
And I agree with that, because what it does, it gives, we were just talking about before the meeting, the code department sometimes doesn't have enough teeth to be able to enforce these, some of these regulations we got, and I think that's what we need to do. We need to give them in black and white a number where they can actually do the enforcement of some of these things that we approve from time to time.
What's your wishes? What, David, help us. Help us.
Does the, does the applicant's representative have a number that you could live with on the outside storage equipment?
Sir, if you could state your name for the rec, I don't think we've got that on the record.
My name is Ron Van Adams. I don't really have a number to represent for Mr. Reeves. The area that he's talking about parking the equipment, which would be on the north side of the property, and we're talking about, you know, industrial lifts, we're not talking about really large pieces of equipment. But I know Mike has probably got, in his whole system, he's probably got 100 units in service, maybe 125, you know. I would think if he could park 30 or 40 lifts, I would think that would be adequate for his business.
Gary?
I would think that would be very reasonable. I think that would be fair, yes, sir.
Okay.
And I assure you, this is not a junkyard. This is not, oh, gosh. There's a junkyard right up the hill, but you know where I'm coming. It's not, that's not the use of this property.
Gary, do you have a comment?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman. And the question I fixed to ask to you is going to come across as being a smart-headed question, but...
That's all right. Go ahead.
So, don't take it that way, but now, Mr. Reeves is the applicant. He's, now, who are you?
I'm the contractor.
Okay.
I'm the builder.
You're going to be the builder for him, so you...
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, if, it would be, it would have been nice if, if he could have been here and not been able to answer some of these questions. It would have been helpful.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Reeves is the applicant. He's just the contractor for Mr. Reeves.
That's correct. I'm the builder.
He is the applicant.
The property owner gave him permission to apply.
Well, I guess I am the applicant, but I'm not the owner. Let me, let me clarify that.
Elizabeth says he is the applicant.
I made the application on behalf of Mr. Reeves and his company. But I do not own the forklift company.
Are you all-American contractor?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. Wishes? What's your wishes?
Fifty.
Fifty? Okay. I have a motion.
With the additional commercial restrictions. The fifty, let me just make sure. We got the fifty pieces of equipment and something about, we'll come up with the wording for operable equipment only on the property. I believe that's what I've got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we do have the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All vote say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Wilco has rezoning and conditional use permit.
Thank you. Our next application is located on the corner of Capital Way and Eps Mill Road. The site is approximately 12 acres in size. It is zoned industrial, C2, and R15. They proposed to rezoning the entire site to industrial with uses of a truck stop, convenience market, gas station, and restaurant. So, the applicant is proposing to build a 24-hour travel plaza with convenience market and restaurants. The concept plan, which you should actually have a large copy of that in front of you, is proposing a 12, 12,000 square foot building with gas and diesel pumps and also 84 large truck parking spaces. Now, they are proposing to connect to the city of Murfreesboro sewer system, which means they will have to meet the city's development standards. Now, the entire area, about 170 acres, was rezoned to commercial around the interstate exit there in 1971. And then in 1985, there was 47 acres rezoned to industrial. That's how you get the piece mill, industrial, commercial, R15 on this one site. Finally, in 2004, the subdivision plot that created Capital Way, the road, was recorded. Now, the surrounding area, as I said, includes industrial, commercial, retail, wholesale, trade, transportation, and R15. This area was classified as an interstate mixed-use node in the Christian Abicannon land use study, and the intent of this node was to allow uses that would support interstate and commuter-type customers. So, the applicant will need to seek a variance from our boris zoning appeals for the amount of signage that they are proposing currently on the site. It is more than is allowed by rezoning resolution. And the concept plan, another concern is it does show 85% lot coverage, covered with either pavement and/or a building. That exceeds the maximum allowed of 80% for a non-residential site, so we would like to see the amount of pavement reduced and hopefully some more landscaping provided. So, just give you a quick look at the site. And our new GIS planner, Eric McMillan, actually has prepared a 3D flyover of the site based on the concept plan submitted by the applicant, so hopefully this will work for us, new, new technology. So, the, the pink structure there would be the gas station. The blue and the purple would be the gas pumps, the diesel pumps and the gas pumps. With the concept plan submitted by the applicant, that's the 85% coverage.
You thought it was supposed to be at 80?
80 is what's allowed in a non-residential zone.
Of course, it's important to remember, this is a concept plan. This isn't the, they would, whenever, if this is approved, they still have to come in with a full-blown site plan, which we would, we'd catch it at that time.
Can you draw up the 80?
Can you get the prescribed number of parking spaces and all, I mean...
Oh, yes.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of extra space on the site.
It will work at that, better.
I believe the applicants are present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
All the entrances and accesses be off of Capital Way?
Yes, since the concept plan only showed entrances on Capital Way. I believe the right-of-way is still the interstate right-of-way on Eps Mill, meaning they couldn't access Eps Mill, wrote from that point.
Yeah, no other entrances on Eps Mill.
But will it, are we getting any plans of widening that road, any?
Right now, it's on our thoroughfare plan, our major thoroughfare plan, as a, I believe, a three-lane road, as I recall. We've actually submitted this to the Nashville area MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, to be included on the 2035 plan, mainly for the intersection portion, about redoing the intersection. Now, that's just going through the evaluation phases at this point. I don't know where that will end up on the plan or if it will end up on the plan, but we have submitted that for the state's consideration for possible funding in the future. But Eps Mill Road, the balance of Eps Mill would be a county, a county road responsibility with fault of the county for ultimate widening in that sense.
Do you already have the block route?
No. We don't. I, I don't believe, it looks like, looking at this plan, that there may be in this portion, because like Elizabeth said, it kind of wide, it's kind of wide in this area because of the interstate. There are maybe portions of it that have it, that have enough in this area, but the balance of the road, I think, right-of-way would have to be acquired. Of course, now, we would know, know that whenever a design was completed, and then at this time, we don't have a design for Eps Mill. But that is one of the, that's one of the ones that we would like to be able to try to do here before too long, and we did wholesale Pike. Eps Mill was one of the, the ones on the radar screen, as was cut-off road. Those were the, the next couple we were looking at, but of course, funding hasn't been, hasn't been there the last few years, so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Is there any plans for a traffic light off in there anywhere? Because it's congested over there. It's congested right off in that, with all those houses back there and stuff, too.
Right, yeah. At this time, I'm not aware of any plans for any, any signalization out in that area. Now, there is a left lane that accesses Miller Road that goes back in that area. Of course, there's a truck stop directly across the street from this. You know, we discussed with the applicant originally the possibility of maybe like a right turn through here to try to get some of the vehicles off of the, off of Eps Mill. Now, this does not show that, this concept plan is not showing that, but that was something that we did discuss with the applicant.
If you're sorry to be there?
And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you actually, it's not properly marked, but if you look, there actually is new asphalt that functions as a right-hand turn lane that would need to be striped. It's already there. It just needs to be properly painted. So, there's a right-hand turn lane that goes to Capital Way that's existing. That's what this black stripe, strip is here. So, just for that information.
So, yeah, with proper stripe being, that might take care of the concern we have.
Okay. Other questions? Other questions before we open it up? Gary.
The question may, the question may have already been asked, and I just didn't hear it because I don't hear, looking at just drawings, but the widening of Eps Mill Road, what's the status of that?
Yeah, the, the status right now, it's, it is on our thoroughfare plan for a three-lane cross-section. At this time, there's no design completed for it, and so it's not really on the, it's something we know we would like to do, but again, no design at this time. We did submit this improvement to the Nashville MPO for inclusion on the 2035 long-range plan. Predominantly, the big reason for that was because of the interchange itself. You know, in order to do that, state funding would be, would be required for that. Now, that is going through the evaluation phase of all the different projects. All the municipalities and counties in this area have submitted project requests to the MPO, and they'll, we're actually meeting on Wednesday to start the, the evaluation of all the different projects. So, I don't know when this will fall on, or where, or if it'll fall. I won't know that for a few more months, probably, so.
Right now... That's Loves, that's right there beside it, correct?
Across the street.
Across interstate.
Interstate, right.
What's right there?
That, that's a, are you talking directly across?
Right.
Yeah, that, that is another truck stop. It's a...
That's what I thought. It's not Loves, it's another truck stop.
Yeah.
Okay. So, how much traffic are we going to have on Eps Mill with, with, with all this right here?
Right now, the, the counts on Eps Mill, as it's, it's, of course, in your staff comments, the, the counts that we have out there right now are about 2,500, 20, anywhere between 2,000 and 2,600 or so, excuse me, on either side of the interstate. Now, whenever we, we put one of these together, one of these staff comments together, we do try to give you an estimate of how much traffic is going to come with one of these developments. Unfortunately, the manual that we look to, the trip generation manual for the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE, doesn't have a specific category for truck stop. And basically, the closest thing we can find is a convenience market with gas station. And unfortunately, there's only been a very limited number of studies on that use that, that is in the, the manual, and it's, it's difficult to extrapolate exactly how much traffic is going to be generated by this based on those numbers.
But the problem is, with, with the trips on these, they're, they're 18-wheelers, and you've got another one across the street from it and one across the interstate from it. The, it's going to be a lot of traffic in there with 18-wheel vehicles. And how's that going to impact?
Well, I think that there will be, I mean, there, there will be traffic generated by this use. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't doubt that. However, I would say that I would think a lot of the trucks, or even a lot of vehicles that are going to be using that road may have been using it anyway, to a certain extent, because of the other truck stops that are already there. I mean, if this were the only truck stop that were going to be there, I would think we would definitely see a, a noticeable increase in the amount of 18-wheeler traffic. But being that if they were going to get off the interstate, if they were going to pull on one side to go to the, the one across the street or go off the interchange to get to the other one, I think they would be using the road anyway, to a certain extent. The same being with just passenger vehicles. I mean, there's going to be a number of vehicles that do use this road that may have been stopping at the Loves or at the other truck stop out there, but, because there's going to be regular gasoline pumps as well, not just for the 18-wheelers. But, you know, so there's going to be a certain amount of traffic that's going to be on that road regardless. So, it's just difficult to quantify exactly how much.
So, so this is not going to increase any more traffic?
Well, again, I'm not going to say it won't increase it at all. It's just, like I said, it's difficult to say exactly how much. I think there's going to be a certain percentage that's already going to be using the road, but there may be some who would decide to, you know, get off this interchange to use that particular station now. So, I, I can't say that it just won't increase. Plus, as more houses are built out in the area, you know, that's, this is the main entrance where Bacchanan Estates, the main exit where Bacchanan Estates is located. I mean, there's still quite a few lots out there to be constructed and still a lot of extra phases that eventually will come in. I mean, I think the traffic will increase on this road. I'm just saying that I think there's a certain amount of traffic that's going to be using the road regardless of whether or not this is built or not.
Okay. Steve?
The traffic flow on this location for, I guess, your regular cars and trucks enter and exit pretty much out of this first entrance on Capital Way. Are the semis coming through on the second or the third entrance? I see the, the diesel canopy right here, but are they coming in on this second?
It's not really indicated on the site plan, or the concept plan anyway, where that's going to happen. Now, I think that the, the applicant could, could probably speak a little bit better to that. Also, I think that the site could probably be designed in such a way that it would, it would either encourage or require the trucks to go to a different entrance. You know, the, the canopy pumps for the diesels are going to be closer to the second entrance. And as you see, there's most of the truck parking spaces that you see are either on that second or that third. I would think that would encourage the, the circulation of those larger vehicles to those entrances, but I think that that can be handled through good site design.
I mean, I, I know we're just looking at concept plan right now. We're not looking at the, at the main plan, but, you know, and, and I know that they will have consideration on that, but we've got to mention it for these semis either coming in on the second entrance and exit or the third right there, the stacking lanes on them getting in and being also being able to get out, because you're looking at Capital Way right there is just, and it's, yeah, it's just a minor roadway. And which, Eps Mill Road is a minor roadway at that point. So, we've got two roads right here with 18-wheelers coming in and out, and that's definitely going to increase the traffic flow on both sides, but I'm just saying, the distance in between on this second entrance for 18-wheelers on stacking lanes, getting in and getting out, it doesn't look too favorable at this point right here. So, that's just something I'm concerned about, you know, looking at this site plan at, for conceptual use right now.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Before we open it up to public hearing? We'll open this up to a public hearing. The applicant, come forward, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners, and thank you, staff, for your review. My name is Kevin Gunther. I'm here representing not only Steve Williams, the developer, but on behalf of Huddleston Steel. Three things we can address right away. We do understand we need to adjust the asphalt coverage of the site, and we can do that, and we can comply with the 80% coverage. We've got, this is, just being a concept, it needs some massaging, and we can certainly tuck some areas and still meet, meet our parking criteria on that. We also understand we need to make sure to comply with the new buffer regulations on landscape. We, we feel very confident that we can do that as well. As far as the access goes, the, the access would be coming in the second and third entrances for the semis, and we can, there, again, you know, the concept plan showed those just as a general idea, but we can certainly work with making sure we've got the stacking distances coming out. But that is the intent, is that those semis come in the second and third entrances, not the first. That would be for auto and normal vehicular use. So, we're also here to answer any other questions you may have.
All right. Questions? We'll have some, we'll have questions. We'll have questions, yes.
Since we don't have any way to objectively predict the volume here, I'm sure when you guys were putting together sort of a market plan and decided this was a viable business location for you, I'm sure you have some estimates, some numbers. Can you share those with us?
I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't, I don't have actual calculations on that. As Mr. Damasi had mentioned, the, the typical ITE standards don't really address this site specifically. I don't know if the applicants may have any ideas as far as the numbers, but, you know, I think it's going to be, I mean, we've got those two other truck stops out there now. Obviously, there's a certain amount of increase that's going to happen, but I can't tell you the exact amount. I, I just couldn't answer that without a further, further study. But I do know that as far as the design of the site and making sure that we pull those access points off our restricted access on Eps Mill Road, you know, we're taking the traffic out and away from the other truck stop entrance to avoid any conflict with that entrance.
Yeah, if you could check with the applicant, because I'm sure they've put together numbers on what they expect the volume to be. I'd, I'd like to know that if they have it with them.
We can, we can certainly look at that as we get into site plan numbers and make sure to have some answers on that as to what kind of volume we anticipate.
Okay. Any, any other questions, yes, Steve?
I think, I think its location makes sense for, for a truck stop, no doubt, just for the location of it and everything. But we've had a numerous amount of complaints, and, and I'm not a trucker, I'm not an engineer, but this little area right there where the, the one little loop is, that when you come off the ramp, I guess you're going east to go back left over the interstate, or if you turned right and come down to hit Miller Road to go in this existing, that's where we've had the complaints that I've heard about or have been spoken to me, is that little troublesome triangle right there. And if you're coming out of Miller Road and going back across interstate where it says ramp right there to get back on the interstate to go east, that's a troublesome area. So, I don't think that's a state issue. Yeah, it may be, but a number of complaints right in there. And I'm, you know, I, I guess you can get with the state or something and see what kind of plans they have, but I think all that right there really needs to coincide with this truck stop coming in, because that means if there's more trucks coming in than the issues that are right there on getting off and getting in or getting on the interstate, haven't heard of any across the interstate on the other side. It's just that little triangle spot right there. So, I don't know what, what the problem is. I mean, I've gotten off there one or two times here in the past two or three years, you know, so, you know, it, I don't know what the issues are right there just from complaints itself. So, I would look into that area and see about the widening of there and then what you're going to do on Capital Way to make this all traffic flow correctly. And I, like I said, I don't know. Is that a county issue or is that a state issue right there on, on this part from connecting to the interstate? I don't know the answer to that question.
Mr. Sandlin, I, if it deals with the actual interchange itself and how that functions, I, I personally think that'd be a state concern. And we've, I mean, it's been, been a few years, but we've actually met with the state about this interchange in the past, so they're aware that there's, there's issues with it and that it's a fairly high-traveled interchange, especially a, a large amount of truck traffic because of the, just the businesses that are out there now, you know, the existing truck stops, the industrial businesses over on the other side of the interstate on Miller Lane. So, that, that was one of the reasons we submitted this as a, as a project to the, the MPO for their consideration, but again, there's no telling at this point when that's going to fall into the plan or where it's going to fall into the plan, so.
When, when you come right off the interstate to that piece of property, what, what's the, what's the problem with making it an entrance only? Will it bottleneck it too much right there? Entrance only, not go down to Capital Way for an entrance? I mean, do, you can have those entrances on Capital Way, but just a, an entrance-only area down from where Steve was talking about, the bottleneck?
You're saying put another entrance?
I mean, that would get them off, they wouldn't have to go to Capital Way, they could follow right off into this piece of property.
I, I believe there's a restricted access, state controls a good portion of that. So, I, I don't, I, I think that at this stage, and correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, I think the way the site was looked at is we really didn't have a whole lot of options as far as coming off Eps Mill Road.
That, that is correct. In fact, we were actually more comfortable with just looking at them all on Capital Way as opposed to actually looking at any traffic, actually trying to go onto the site directly from Eps Mill Road. We would rather see them go down on the capital and then turn into the, to the, the site from Capital Way.
Doug, let me follow up on that. I guess my biggest concern is the fact that Capital Way is a minor road, and it's, it just seems concerning to me that you're putting that level of traffic on that road. And, and is it, I mean, just to make sure I'm reading the map right, is it a two-lane or is it a two-lane with a turn lane? Is it?
I believe it's just two, I don't...
Okay, that's how I was reading it. It looked like a two-lane to me, too.
Now, it was built to, I will say, it was built to city of Murfreesboro standard because of the, the sewer out there, and the whole subdivisions are already zoned industrial, really with the exception of this, of this parcel, a portion of this parcel that we're talking about today. And as of this point, the road, it just kind of, it just dead-ends. It doesn't really go anywhere.
So, I guess, as I'm looking at this, and maybe it's too close to the interstate as to why you didn't want to do this, but I was, if you did an entrance directly opposite where Miller Road is, if there was going to be a traffic signal at some point, wouldn't it make sense to have it opposite a road on the other side so that you've got an intersection there? Was that, is it too close to the interstate? You're worried about backing up traffic? I'm, I'm just curious, I'm trying to understand the thinking about putting everything on Capital Way.
Yeah, I understand, I understand where you're going with that. I mean, I'll, I'll be upfront, I'm not a traffic engineer either, and I, I don't know if I have a good answer to that question. My gut tells me that it probably is a little too close to the, the outlet there off of, off of 24. I think it would be, I think it might be, it might be problematic right there. Now, again, I'm not, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I guess kind of where staff was coming from is the trucks come, they come off Eps Mill Road, and then, you know, with that widened area through there, they automatically get into the right, you know, once it's striped properly, they can get off onto the, the right, well, that would be a right turn lane at that point, which gets them out of the main traffic flow of Eps Mill Road and onto Capital Way as opposed to actually having an entrance a little further up the road and, and possibly, you know, impacting traffic right there. That was kind of our, our take on it.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Any other question? Mike?
Doug, what's the zoning across capital from this property or, or what's the proposed zoning? What will it end up being?
I believe the property directly on the other side of capital is all industrial.
North of it, but what about west, west, west of capital?
Yes. If you look at your, there's actually a map of the zoning in your, in your packet. There's that, that whole area right through there, directly on the other side of Capital Way, then the large tract next to it along Eps Mill Road is, is already zoned industrial. Yes. Yes, sir.
Any more questions? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for or against? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Gary?
Here's, here's where I'm having the heartburn at. If, if you look right there at Miller Road and Eps Mill Road, those are two two-lane roads. You've got Loves, which is across interstate, and you've got whatever that Tank and Tummy or whatever that is right there across from the proposed site. There's going to be increase... There's gonna be increased tractor-trailer traffic. Common sense would tell us that, right there going to the, the new site. Somehow, we've got to, we've got to be able to maneuver our, this traffic through that intersection there. And I know there's been people up here in the, in the past, I know Commissioner Jernigan has had some issues out there about with Miller Road on, I think there was a tractor, a trucking company out there recently was the last thing that they'd come up about, I think, one of Doug.
We, on, on Miller Road, we've actually looked at a couple different, we looked at a, I think it was a barrel, uh, storage facility on Miller, and then across the street was kind of a, there was a industrial, a couple, well, no, it was a distribution center on the, on the, I guess that'd be the west side.
And I think we're, we're increasing traffic out there, but the, and the traffic that we're increasing is the bigger vehicles, which are hard to maneuver, you know, on a two-lane road. That's where I'm, I mean, I agree with, with Steve. I mean, it's ideal for a tractor, I mean, a trucking, a truck stop, it's ideal location for it, but I'm just having a heartburn with the way the infrastructure is out there to be able to maneuver this increased traffic of truckers, of trucks. So that's, that's the heartburn I'm having right now, and how you fix it.
That's a question, then, how do you fix it?
Yeah.
I mean, ultimately, I, I think widening of the road and, you know, realigning the interchange would be your, would be the ultimate fix. Of course, that takes time and, and, you know, considerable amount of resources.
And that's gonna fall on the state.
The interchange, yes, the, the rest of Epsom Hill Road, I think would be county responsibility at that point.
Mike?
Doug, is part of what we're doing here cleaning up the zoning, because I see it says the current zoning is industrial and then C2 and then R15. So, I mean, what we're doing is getting all of it on the same page?
Well, that was, when they came in with this plan originally, that was our recommendation because it wasn't so much the commercial and the industrial that bothered us so much, it was that little portion of residential that's still just kind of a sliver from a, you know, a remnant from a time past that, you know, when they, when they originally did the rezoning back in this area, it was one of those, you know, 800 feet this way, 500 feet this way, and, you know, it made a nice, pretty little rectangle, but unfortunately the lots didn't follow along with it. So that was why we told them, since they're having to come forward for this anyway, to just go ahead and, and like you said, clean up the, the zoning of the property so it was all consistent.
All right, the second thing, then, why, why do they need a conditional use permit? I mean, this will be a, really a permanent deal, a permanent zone here.
Right, with our, with, the way the zoning is currently structured, I mean, this is similar to, to the services zone or any other commercial zone that we have, there are no permitted uses by right, so everything has to be done by conditional use permits.
Okay.
That's, that's why.
Doug, I think this needs to be industrial and I'm all for it. From right here at the ramp where it goes to their property around the Capital Way, I mean, wouldn't it be prudent for us to, if we've got heartburn, as the commissioner said, about this road, which I do, for the developer to widen it? To take care of their issue on Capital Way and this, and then we don't have to worry about that. The state, I believe, is gonna be the hurry-up-and-wait point on them fixing this corner right here and, and, and I don't know if we have teeth in our zoning ordinance to hold this up because of the state. I'd like to, I'd like for it to be finished and, and fixed out there, so all these residents back in here coming out and hitting 24 every morning or not, or coming home every afternoon and not gonna be backed up out on interstate trying to get in or bogged down right here, bottlenecked, however you wanna say it, in this area, trying to get home. So if we can put in there for the developer to fix that part for their thing, I'm, I'm ready to go with it, and then we'll stay on the state about trying to get this out here fixed.
I mean, that, you can place that as a condition if that's what, I mean, the planning commission desires, they could put that on as a condition of approval.
Mike?
Steve, exactly. I mean, the Epsom Hill part of the Capital Way or both and how wide and get, get a little more specific as to what you're wanting there.
Well, now, that's, that's where you gotta get an expert in, and I'm surely not that.
I think you're talking, you're talking about the frontage of their property along Epsom Hill Road, basically, is kinda what, as I hear you, is what you're wanting to see.
Well, we've, we've asked developers before for situations on their property and what they're wanting to do to, to come in and put a turn lane in or something, and this right here would, I would think, with the county and with the state and with the developer all talking together here about fixing this issue right here. We can't fix on down the road or across interstate or whatever. We're talking about taking care of a situation on bringing in another truck stop on that location, and I'm, like I said, I think this is a time where you, you ask the developer, we agree with you on the, on the rezoning of it, we agree with you, it needs, you know, it'd be a good location for there, but we've got, we've got issues with traffic, and that would fix that problem right there. The state's still got an issue, and we'll stay on top of them and try to get that resolved if we can. But at this point is when I think they need to help us out, help themselves out, basically, for their development. And of course, I don't wanna ask the developer that if, if, yeah, they can come up and speak on that.
We've heard a lot in that we're on the site. I mean, I think if I've heard right, the idea of putting this to industrial is not a, a challenge in that we've got industrial around it, it was kind of fitting with what's going on. We've also heard loud and clear that there's some concerns about the traffic and how it would flow through specifically Epsom Hill Road and then, and make the turn. And obviously, you need to put what conditions on the site that you feel comfortable with. I think what I'd like to ask is if, and, and Doug, correct me if this, this would be something that would be possible, to allow the zoning to, to go through with the understanding that as we get into a site plan review and we can look at specifics, because tonight I don't think any of us have had specifics, that if we could allow with a clear understanding, you know, if this is rezoned, that we will understand that we need to evaluate the traffic condition carefully at site plan review, because without knowing, you know, exact distances for turn lanes and that sort of thing, it's hard for the developer to commit to anything tonight, so.
Well, we'd tell you a little bit more than that, I think, where we put a condition on it of a, being approved industrial, that you did whatever right-of-way requirements that are needed by the county and state, whatever it is, I don't know, I don't know how to word that, I'll let the professionals word it, but as long as you see the, the situation that we're looking at right here, I mean, for that to happen.
Right, we, we understand.
Like I said, I'm not an engineer, so I don't.
Well, I think that's kind of my, all I'm trying to say is, you know, until an engineer looks at it and tells us what the geometry needs to be, it's hard for us to say, we'll commit to a certain amount of improvements, but we're certainly willing to commit to look at that, understanding that site plan stage, we need to make sure we remedy that concern.
Yeah, I, I think might be a better approach here, actually, Mr. Gunther and Mr. Sandlin and Planning Commission. It might be a, a better approach for this to be deferred, to allow us a better chance to look at this, rather than trying to come up with some wording about how we wanna to, to do this, maybe to take a, a little time to look at this, come up with a, a solution for, to, to submit to you at, at a, at a subsequent meeting, whether that be at the next day meeting or just the next evening meeting, however you guys would wanna handle it, would be fine with us, but that would, I think that'd probably be more prudent at this, at this time.
Doug, I don't have a problem with that, and, and to defer it to the next meeting. Like I said, whether it be the day meeting or whether it be their next month meeting, 30 days or something, that'd be fine.
Yes, sir, would you like to?
Can I speak?
Yes.
My name is Steve Williams. That's a deal killer if it's deferred, because my option expires and so we'll.
If I may, I'm sorry, when does your option expire on the property?
Larry, it's to know, because the key thing for us to continue to spend money is, we got, it's gotta be zoned, and that was the first hurdle we have to do. So if we have to go through those hurdles, we probably won't move forward. You know, I can't address the flow of the traffic. If you'll look at that second drive, I think the canopy's 240 feet, correct me if I'm wrong, bike, a truck's 70 feet. So we've allocated, we can service 24 trucks at a given time, eight after they fueled, eight fueling, and eight can be in line, and I can assure you, if we have that much stacking, I'd be glad to put an extra turn lane in. I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't envision that kind of business, ma'am, to your point, and you won't believe me, but we're real simple. I ride up the highway and I ride down the highway, and I decide where we wanna build a location. I didn't do any studies, we don't have all the computer program, it's all gut, that's the way my father and I did our business, and it's not real scientific. And I look at where I think we need to be strategically on a map where our customers tell us gonna be, and we have a niche that we need to be between Nashville and Chattanooga, and that's God honest truth. So I, you know, I don't have any studies to, to give you in 30 days, I'll tell you the same thing 30 days from now that I'm telling you now.
Doug, with it being on sanitary sewer service as well, the city's got an input on this too, don't they?
That is correct, and actually, I see Mr. Lewis standing, I think he wants to make a comment.
Yeah, my name's Robert Lewis, I work for the City of Murfreesboro, and the whole thing is this is tied to sewer, and in order for it to develop, it's gotta, all of it has to develop for city standards, so we'll look at the traffic, we'll look at this water and sewer, we'll look at the parking, we've got traffic engineers, we'll look at all that plus engineering staff and planning staff, so, excuse me, before they get final approval from, from the city, they'll have to conform to the city's standards. So we'll have plenty of people looking at it for a lot of different reasons.
Do you envision any huge problems based on looking at this tonight or whatever, however you've looked at it previously?
It's a 12-acre site, it's got 12,000 square foot building, they're gonna put in a convenience market, two restaurants, plus, I don't know what else. You know, parking is gonna be an issue, but there's a lot of room out there for trucks and city, or for vehicles, so, like I say.
If the city thinks they need a, a turn lane down Epsom Hill, they'll make them put a deceleration lane or something like that.
Sure.
And if they don't meet that criteria, they're not getting sewer, so they're not getting a building, a, a strategic occupancy or building permit or anything.
Right, they have to work with the planning department and work all that out, and I don't know what all the specific details are, because this is just a conceptual plan right now, but I don't, you know, there's, there's some workability in there.
Well, we just don't wanna approve the zoning and then pass the buck on to the city, we wanna hand you a nice little package, you know, ready to look at, and we understand that and know you'll go through it, the planning commission with a fine-tooth comb as well and building a codes department. But, so y'all, if y'all, I guess, noted that different problems in this area right here on trucks entering and exiting and regular vehicles entering and exiting and all that stuff, then?
Every site has their little specific things, and like I say, we have an engineering staff, traffic staff, that, that's what they do. They just look for things like that, so they'll, they'll look at this and figure out what the best way to, to serve the property and, and the road network, and if it takes a little lane here or an extra turn lane there, you know, access point here, you know, we'll, we'll work it out.
Kedou, thank you much.
All right, thanks.
Craig, what I was gonna say a few minutes ago is, I don't know why, but I seem like I'm always out there, and there's, although I live on the other side of the county, and there's a lot of traffic, those trucks crossing the interstate, because the Love's truck stop is the newest and biggest and brightest and flashiest one, and the trucks are getting off and they're going across. If we had a new truck stop on this side, they're basically gonna get the eastbound traffic, it's gonna come off and go straight in, because the westbound traffic is going straight into Love's site, so this might actually be an improvement to keep those trucks on their own perspective side for the most part, because they're gonna be going that way to start with, and they're gonna end up right there in that new truck stop, and they're gonna come out and they're gonna hit that loop and go right back and never cross the bridge, but you go over there and they're backed up across the bridge, and if we had, you know, the one, the one that's already on the other side, I don't think they've got the capacity to handle all the stuff on that side, so, so I think this could actually, actually help myself.
Mike?
First of all, that's a great point. I think that will relieve opposite side of the traffic, but I guess my question is, did this body put any restrictions on the truck stop that surrounds Millers or Miller Road in terms of the same ramp issues and the triangle issues? I mean, it's no different than the one we're proposing tonight, so I just, I just have a hard time with, huh? Well, I, I guess my problem that I have is, you know, if it's okay for the one that's been there, why would you penalize the new guy by making him spend a lot more money on something that we're not even sure how many more vehicles is gonna add to the, to the road? I just, I always hate to see this, you know, I guess the, the second, the old saying, the second mouse gets the cheese. I'm not sure why we always punish the people that are trying to develop when we should have addressed that with the, with the truck stop on Miller. You know, if it wasn't an issue then, I'm not sure why it's an issue now. I guess it's my, it's my thought process.
Well, Tank and Tummy is way back there, that's not a new deal, but as far as, whoa, as far as safety, it's not punishment on safety. Safety is safety every day, so I don't consider that punishment. That's, that's just looking out for all those residents and homes from their back trying to get in and out every day, and so then when you add 18-wheelers involved, I mean, that's, truck stop's a lot different than a convenience store, and they're gonna have a convenience store and restaurants and truck stop, so I mean, it's a, it's a lot different.
I'm just saying the addition of another truck stop, well, we're not sure of the quantity of trucks, so I've got three choices in full for it. I don't, I don't really find that it's a safety thing, because that should've been addressed on the truck stop and on the road, those same issues should've been addressed in instead of trying to make up for that, so that's my complaint.
Okay, Mike?
If we approve this tonight and, and approve the conditional use permit, that allows them to go ahead and establish a definite site plan that has to come back to us.
Yes.
And then go to the city too, so we've, they've got two more steps. We've actually got two steps with two separate bodies to address this traffic in the, the actual site plan.
That is correct. I mean, really, there's another step even before that, and that's the county commission, which will consider this first. Of course, they're looking at the zoning, not necessarily the site plan, but then, like you said, the site plan would have to come to this body as well as to the City of Murfreesboro for their review.
Okay, what you wish, yes, ma'am?
Craig, I just wanna elaborate on what he's talking about as far as that truck stop that was there. That thing has been there forever, and I don't think it was as developed as it is now, when that, when that, what is the name of it? Tank and Tummy or whatever it is, but it's been there, it was there when I was a little girl, riding a bus back over in there, so, and that was back in the, huh, I don't wanna mention, but.
Regulations and things change over time, and, I mean, it, I think you make a good point, there's been a lot more development out there, you know, at one, I mean, that interchange probably functioned just fine for a number of years, I mean, it's, it's functioning now, but eventually you start getting to a point where, you know, more development happens, more development happens, and something needs to be done, and, you know, we might be getting to that point, so.
Okay, Will, do you have a comment?
Well, as a member of the budget committee, I was gonna say, we're looking at a soft opportunity here to have a good bit of sales tax in the county, that's what we're looking for, we don't need another truck stop inside the city limits, we don't need one two-exits down in Coffee County giving them the tax revenue. I don't mean to have blind faith or lean on anybody else, but the city's gonna make them jump through a lot of hoops to build this thing and hook up the sanitary sewer, which they'll have to do, and that will meet the traffic criteria. I've got a lot of faith in their staff, hate to kill this deal, see it move two exits down and give Coffee County that money. We need sales tax, that's gonna put a lot of people to work building this thing, and it'll, it'll keep the tax dollars here, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve with, we haven't had any conditions.
We, we have one listed down there about.
With all staff's conditions and, and for them to meet the city's criteria.
All right.
Second?
I have a second, all right. All in favor of the motion? We got a motion and a second, the call roll.
Yeah, we had the public hearing and, we had the public hearing and closed.
We had, we closed the public hearing, yeah, which we sort of used it a little bit when we came back, yes.
I just got a question.
With the... With the... I wanna vote yes on this thing because, like I said, I think it's the right piece of property to do a truck stop on. Doug, what... I'd like to word it in some sort of fashion, you know, if any other land's required or whatever, that the developer, you know, donate that property for us to do that on. If the county's involved in doing it, if the state's doing it, I mean, they'll have to deal with their own deal. But we've required it before. And to develop your property? So, I don't see why we wouldn't wanna do it here, too.
You're talking for the, for traffic improvements?
The traffic, yes. Traffic improvements.
I mean, you could probably word something to the effect... And like I said, we can come up with the exact wording, but something to the effect of... Analyzing the... Well...
And Commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, it's one of those situations where you know what you wanna say just trying to come up with the words to actually say it.
I hate to amend your motion, but if, could we just put that in there as well as far as the property owner or developer working with the county and city?
Might be a better approach is...
Seems like they're gonna do that anyway. But it's just, I would've sworn it in writing here for those folks out there.
During the time between this and the county commission meeting, that'll give us an opportunity to work with, you know, city staff and the applicant to come up with a solution, a workable solution to that. I mean, maybe not actually put anything in there right now just with the understanding that that's something that we'll look at, you know, before the county commission meeting, if you're comfortable with that.
That wording is in there with your motion, is it not? But the city's gonna take a look at it.
Meet the city's standards.
Meet the city's standards.
I don't hear an actual change in the motion yet. I mean, because if the city requires them to put in a turn lane or deceleration lane, they're gonna have to put it in on their own property or acquire the property if it's not their property. But, yeah, the staff can work one between now and then. We'll have another opportunity at county commission level for that.
Okay, good.
And Doug, you correct me if I'm wrong, but the city planning department's gonna probably have a traffic study required because this more than likely...
I don't know if they'd actually do an actual traffic study on something like this. But, I mean, they'll have to meet whatever standards that they have. You know, and if it requires a study from their part to be able to determine whether or not they need these things, that's something that they will require them to do. I don't know if it's just mandatory on the front end.
Got a motion? Got a second? Just call a roll, please.
Rhonda Allen? Richie Boland? Veronica Buchanan? Gary Farley? Will Jordan? Mike Kush? Jeff Phillips? Steve Sandlin? Mike Vaught? Craig Lynch?
Yes. All right, motion carries. All right, next step?
I'm sorry.
Their next step is what?
Their next step with them would be the county commission meeting in, well, June.
All right. Planning director's report?
Yes, I just have just a couple items. First thing before I get into the main item. It was brought to my attention today from our friends with Channel 19 that with the... Of course, at the last meeting, you'll recall that we went... We decided to try the day meeting at 9:00 a.m. For May, that won't be a problem. For June day meeting, which is June the 28th, that's actually scheduled on the same day as the county commission meeting where they'll be considering the budget. I guess I'm kinda looking for guidance from the commission if they would rather try to meet at 1:00 o'clock. I know sometimes those budget meetings can last a while depending on the situation. You never can tell. Or would you be better off, maybe in a position, maybe put it on Tuesday or something like that as opposed to... The June 28th day meeting is the... For the planning commission would be at the same time as the county commission meeting to consider the budget. That's... The website actually says 28th, yeah.
It said the tax rate Monday to 28th. I would hesitate to...
Correct me if I'm wrong. I thought the website said the 28th.
Personally, I'd hate to have both meetings back to back because sometimes we take till up in the afternoon to set the tax rate.
Okay. What you wish is, I mean, what do you want?
We can do it on the following day, on the Tuesday, if you'd rather. If that would work for everybody, would you still... I mean, we could still do 9:00 a.m. Everything else would be the same.